America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Was that John LaCoches' phone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Swicker?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Brier? Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
I move that we excuse absent Councilmember Brier.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Ms. Palmer, that the council excuse Councilmember Brier. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So, first thing, pardon me, first thing on the agenda is a special proclamation.
Proclamation, Renton Heart Month, whereas heart disease continues to be the leading cause of death in the United States and affects men and women of every age and race, and whereas many people who have high blood pressure may go years without knowing it, which is why heart disease is called America's silent killer, and whereas the chance of developing coronary heart disease can be reduced by taking simple steps to prevent and control certain factors that put people at greater risk, and whereas the Renton Fire and Emergency Services Department supports its commitment to fighting heart disease by promoting preventative screenings and public education in many of the diverse communities throughout Renton, and whereas Renton Heart Month serves to increase public awareness of the importance of fighting cardiovascular disease by developing good eating habits, being physically active, and taking advantage of preventative screenings, and whereas being aware of the warning signs of a heart attack or stroke and knowing what to do may help save a life, and all Renton residents are encouraged to learn how to perform cardiopulmonary resuscitation, CPR, and use an automatic external defibrillator, an AED. Now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim February 2012 to be Renton Heart Month, and I encourage all citizens to increase their awareness of cardiovascular disease detection and prevention by participating in this important community risk reduction campaign. In witness whereof, I've here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 23rd day of January 2012. Sign Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Move the council concur in the proclamation.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with this proclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I want to say we have a number of firefighters here in the audience with us. This program for the month of February last couple of years has been absolutely outstanding. Our firefighters have provided service to hundreds upon hundreds of our citizens and literally have saved lives, so it's my pleasure to present this to Chief Peterson.
Members of council, Mark Peterson, Fire Chief, Emergency Services Administrator for the Fire and Emergency Services Department, and it is, it's a pleasure to be up here talking about Heart Month. Since its inception in 2007, we have screened over 20,000, 27,000 people in the month of February. Eighteen percent of those folks didn't know they had either high blood sugar or high blood pressure, and so we referred those people on to their private medical provider for follow-ups treatment. In 2009, the Heart Month campaign won a top award at the National Communications and Marketing Association, and it's also being looked at by other jurisdictions and being praised by the state and local emergency medical services leaders. So, we're kind of on the forefront of Heart Month. And then, this year, I'm pleased to announce, it's the second year in a row that we're going to partner with Valley Medical Center. We're going to have an added emphasis, too, on our multicultural communities, and so we're going to go out to where they're at and provide the blood pressure and blood screening, and that's in the temples and the churches and everywhere where they're congregating, and we've actually developed some really good relationships with our different communities. The firefighters and staff from Valley Medical will provide screenings at a number of culturally diverse locations throughout the City of Renton, including the Fairwood neighborhood. And this couldn't happen without the support of the council and the mayor, and it can't, it wouldn't certainly be as successful it is without our firefighters out there, really working with the people and making contacts with those people. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, next is a special presentation by Valley Cities Counseling. Ewan, are you going to make a presentation?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and tonight, in front of you, not as your administrative services administrator, but as a board member of Valley Cities Counseling Consultation Center. Valley Cities is a community behavior health organization that formed by community members in South King County in 1965. So, nearly 50 years now that Valley Cities has been dedicated to build a healthy, build healthy communities one percent at a time. And today, Valley Cities is serving over 6,000 customers, clients, in, through its clinics in Auburn, Auburn, Kent, Renton, and Federal Way. And in 2012, we're actually going to increase access of the service to, for Renton population, both by moving our current office on Powell Street to 200 Mile Building, as well as adding another access point at Highlands, in the Highlands area, co-locating with the Renton Housing Authority. So, I just want to say that we received a very important grant, and that will help to serve a very high-risk population, group of population, in the community, but I want to introduce Ken Taylor, who is leading the Valley Cities as a CEO, to create the whole community service and the mental health service program. And so, Ken, if you can.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ken Taylor. I'm the current CEO of Valley Cities Counseling. My pleasure to be here tonight. Just wanted to take a couple of minutes of your time to talk to you about a fascinating grant that we received from the Bristol Myers Squibb Foundation. Our friend Penny, your friend Penny, is here with me tonight, because before I came to work for Valley Cities about a year ago, our agency was selected to provide counseling services for people leaving the SCORE facility. And I got to the job and asked the question, "Well, how are we going to pay for that?" And no one had an answer. So, one thing led to another, and fortunately, we were able to get this $1.1 million grant from Bristol Myers Squibb. And we're going to do something that we think is pretty unique, both in the state of Washington and nationally. We're going to partner with the SCORE facility along, along with our friends from Spokane, and we're going to research and evaluate a program where we place people who have a history of mental illness at the SCORE facility, who are going to work with people while they're incarcerated, so that when they're released, they actually have a plan. And so, when they return to the community, our goal is to have engaged them successfully while they're there, so that they can re-enter this community and all of the other SCORE partner communities with this plan that will hopefully reduce their likelihood to commit another crime. I mean, it's as simple as that. We know that there's an awful lot of people with mental illness who are incarcerated. We know there's more people with mental illness in jail and in prison now than there are in psychiatric hospitals. So, if we're successful, and I believe we will be, we will have demonstrated and documented a program that hopefully will be something that can be replicated across the country. So, I just wanted to very briefly tell you about that, and with a kind of grin on my face, say, "Wow," and people in New York City are talking about South King County and what we're doing to try to address this alarming problem. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Penny would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, Penny, why don't you step up, and everybody in the room here knows about SCORE, but our listeners at home may not.
Sure, I'm Penny Bartley. I'm the director with SCORE, and this is just so exciting to be able to partner with a great community organization like Valley Cities and to receive a grant from Bristol Myers Squibb's Foundation. You know, Valley Cities did all the legwork on this and did the grant application, but they competed with other grant requests from across the nation, and this was one of two selected projects, so it's very exciting, and the value of the grant is certainly significant. So, we hope to be able to provide great services for that inmate population that needs it.
And for our residents at home that don't know, SCORE is our jail that we partner with, with six other South County cities. So, council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I can't believe, this is the greatest thing that has ever happened. As many know, I'm retired from law enforcement, and I've said for years, if we could treat mental illness, we could cut our jail capacity by 50% or better. This is, this is just awesome, and I can't think of two better partners. And you've got a really good partner in Penny. I'm very proud of what she's done for the city and what she's done for our jail.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
And I had a question. I too am very excited about this. I noticed in the grant that the $1.1 million, I know that that'll get us started and create a plan. Can you tell us how, some ideas for sustaining that?
Well, Mr. Corman, what I hope will happen is that the King County Regional Support Network at the conclusion of this grant will have seen our success and that they will provide the continuing funding. They were supporters of ours through this process, and they actually met with the representatives from Bristol Myers Squibb while they were here on site. There's no guarantees, of course, and in this current environment, everything is very much up in the air, but I think if we can do this and do this well, and actually demonstrate that we're keeping people at home, in the community, out of jail, they're not committing the misdemeanor kind of crimes that have, you know, caused them to end up at the SCORE facility, that the county will be very likely to continue.
It's a strong business case.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, I, I'm very excited about this also. In fact, I just gave a regional report in our committee of the home, home meeting, and one of the topics was the Committee to End Homelessness, and I'm curious if you've had any contact with the Committee to End Homelessness, because there's a large group of multidisciplinary partners that are doing this kind of work, and this could be a great addition to that and could possibly even be maybe some conversation with the funders group for potential funding and sustaining of this kind of work.
Thank you. I, actually, I'm a member of the committee as of October or November. I started in Valley Cities last March, so I'm still relatively new on the job, but I'm hopeful that this is something not only that we can do at the SCORE facility, provide at the SCORE facility, but ultimately provide in other facilities as well. Down in Pierce County, people with mental illness who are in the process of recovering from their disease are now actually working in the emergency departments at some of the hospitals, and it's been, it's been a remarkable success for them. And law enforcement frequently bring people to the emergency department, of course, and through the contact with, with a trained peer who can talk about his or her life experience and the fact that they've gone through whatever this person is about to go through, and really are producing some remarkable outcomes. So, I really look forward to getting this program up and getting it, getting it started and coming back someday to tell you how successful we've been.
Great.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
And so, the notion once again is that during, while someone is still incarcerated and getting treatment, and then have a treatment plan that would continue after their release or however long to get well?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, the patient, the consumer, client, whatever label you want to use for them, has to agree to participate, but assuming that they're agreeable to participate, more than likely, they will leave in one of our cars, and we will have a plan for them, especially an urgent plan for the first few days after they've been reintroduced into the community.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Taylor. We appreciate you coming down here, and Penny, it's always good to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next is a public meeting on an annexation. Mr. Peach?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Alex Peach. I'm the administrator of the Department of Community and Economic Development, and with me tonight is Angie Mathias, a planner in our department. We have a small annexation to share with you for the first time tonight. This is known as the Windstone 5 Annexation. It's, as Angie will show you, it's out on the eastern, northeastern corner of the city off SR 900. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Angie.
Thank you. Good evening. This is the public meeting for the Windstone 5 proposed annexation. So, we've started including this slide to give you, the audience and our council, an idea of where in the process we are, and as Alex indicated, this is very early on in the process. Just that 10% petition has been submitted to the city, and we're here at that second step of meeting with the council. If it's so authorized, then the petitioner would then begin circulation of a 60% petition, and that's 60% of the assessed value of the total area. They've submitted one that represents 10% of the assessed value, signatures from the people who own property in that area. So, you can see it's up in our northeastern, the northeastern portion of our city. It's actually within an unincorporated island and located near the urban growth boundary. It's within our potential annexation area located at the northeastern portion. It's about 4.3 acres in size. The uses are just single-family and vacant land. Excuse me, the boundaries, there's a parcel line near 16th, northeast 16th Street at the north. To the east, it's a parcel line about 148th Avenue southeast. To the south, it's a parcel line that abuts Sunset Boulevard, and to the west, it's another parcel line that's near Lyons Avenue. So, here's an aerial. You can see a lot of vacant land and some homes within the area, but that it's a relatively small area within, or larger area. Existing conditions, there are some top topography issues within the area, but nothing that would be regulated by the city, but you can see there's some slopes in the area range of 15 to 25%, that little yellow shaded area. And there is also a Class 4 waterway known as Green Stream that runs along roughly that eastern boundary, and that is along a significant portion of that eastern boundary, almost to the extent of it. Public services, the area is currently served by Eastside Fire, but Renton would serve that directly if it were to annex. Utilities, it's within Water District 90, and Renton Sewer is the sewer provider, but that would, neither one of those would change if the area were to annex. And it's in the Isicquash School District, that also would not change if the area were to annex. In King County, the area is designated in their comprehensive plan as urban residential medium, which allows a range of four to 12 dwelling units per gross acre, and the area in King County is currently zoned at R4, and they use that gross density. In Renton, the area is designated as residential low density, which allows a range of RC, which is one dwelling unit per 10 acres, up to R4. There's also the R1 density. This area was part of a pre-zoning ordinance a number of years ago, and it was pre-zoned R5. We don't have that zone anymore, so we would need to go through a zoning process again. So, if the petitioner, if it's authorized and the petitioner does in turn submit a 60% petition, then we would begin that process with that petition being submitted, but at this point, we won't, we're not taking any action regarding that. The annexation policies, we always look and see what our comprehensive plan points us towards. Objective LUI says that we should support annexation of county areas that are within RPAA and can be efficiently provided with infrastructure and city services, are urban separators, or have environmental constraints, and Policy LU 41 says that we should promote annexation of areas with a residential population who already use our services or impact our We also look at the Boundary Review Board objectives. To preserve natural neighborhoods and communities, this doesn't affect that. To use physical boundaries, and this is using parcel lines, which is considered a physical boundary, to create and/or preserve logical service areas, those are all previously agreed to in these conditions, and so those are unchanged. Prevent abnormally irregular boundaries, it's using a very regular, almost rectangular boundary, and then annexation is, the proposed annexation is of an unincorporated area to a city that is urban in character, and Renton is an urban city. We also always look at our fiscal analysis. Currently, there's only four dwelling units within the area. If it were to build out at full development, assuming that it was at the maximum capacity, it would be a possibility of 12 dwelling units, that'd be a total, not an addition. And then, we are using that revised fiscal analysis that we did last year, where we're assuming that costs are increasing at 3.3% annually, and revenue is increasing at 2.5% annually. So, what that looks like for this annexation to our operating fund is that at existing, the revenues are about $5,000 with costs at about $4,000. 10 years, if there were 12 dwelling units at this site, there would be about $17,000 in revenues and about $14,000 in costs. To the capital and enterprise fund, there'd be about $1,100 to revenues at existing development of those four houses, about $500 in costs, and then if there were 12 houses there in 10 years, it'd be about $1,200 in revenues with about $6,000 in costs. After we receive a 10% petition, we always circulate it to all the different departments within the city and ask them what they think and if they have any concerns, if it represents a logical extension of their services. All the departments that responded indicated that indeed, this is a logical extension of their services and that they had no concerns about the annexation as proposed. In conclusion, the best interest and general welfare of the city are served by this annexation. It furthers our business goals by ensuring a higher provision of quality development and efficient provision of urban services, represents a logical extension of our city services, and is consistent with our annexation policies, and it's also consistent with our Boundary Review Board criteria that we have to look at. In conclusion, the administration recommends that the council authorize the circulation of a 60% direct petition to annex, specifying that property owners accept the city's comprehensive plan land use designation, as well as the zoning that would come with that.
Thank you, Angie. Any questions from council? Okay, this is a public meeting. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on this topic?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Move the public meeting be closed?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Mr. Corman, that this public meeting be closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council authorize circulation of a 60% direct petition to annex specifying property owners accept the city's comprehensive plan use designation and zoning.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Swicker, that council authorize circulation of a 60% direct petition. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Okay, moving on to administrative report. Deb, are you giving the administrative report? Okay. We have a little update on our recent storm.
And I'll be followed by Public Works Administrator Greg Zimmerman to give a little more detail, but I wanted to give just a quick overview of the storm response, because as we all know, we were hit pretty hard with an ice storm, and, and as most of us know, we were told snow, and then surprise, ice in the morning.
Deb, can you let everybody know on TV who you are?
Sure. Sorry. I'm Deborah Needham. I'm the Emergency Management Director for the city. I'm going to go ahead and just talk very quickly about some of the things that we did during this and give just some updates on some of our numbers for this response. First of all, although we had some city programs that did need to shut down during our storm response, such as the golf course and some recreation programs, City Hall remained open, the Renton Community Center and our senior center remain staffed and operational, serving as warming shelters for our citizens during the day. We also had some firsts that occurred as a result of this storm, the Haram Bay Cold Weather Shelter operated for the first time, so this is something that council had approved very recently, and this was the first actual operational moment for the, for the shelter. It served 62 clients over a period of four evenings, including one family, and I just wanted to give kudos to Karen Berksvik, was someone who recently spearheaded this and got that working for us. We had another first that occurred with this particular storm response. We have established a Facebook and Twitter presence with emergency management, but we'd never actually deployed it for an incident, so we thought, "Why not give it a try?" So, we had an amazing response. We received all kinds of responses from citizens. We were retweeted by the City of Renton site as well. We had residents making resource requests, providing weather reports and situation updates from where they were at in their areas of the city. Some people were seeking shelter information or school closure information, and we were able to maintain that using a combination of paid staff and volunteers and remain very present on the social media. So, I wanted to give a shout out to Mindy Mattson, our Emergency Management Coordinator. She had the vision to get that going and to start it, and there's another one that I can attribute to Mindy as well. This was our first-ever deployment of our Neighborhood Information Centers. So, we have those school information boards outside every public school, every Renton School District main entrance within the City of Renton. We have those boards out there, so that if we have lost power, we still have a way to communicate with our residents. We were able to use our amateur radio operators to go out under many, many inches of ice and snow. They were able to get out there to every single one of the 17 schools and publish shelter location information in 17 different languages. Altogether, our Renton Emergency Communications Service volunteers, who do excellent documentation, document that they contributed 238 and a half hours of volunteer service under the worst possible weather conditions. We also had a special outreach that we did to our community liaisons. We had a special message from Public Health that said they had very high concerns about carbon monoxide scenarios, as we did in the 2006 windstorm incident, and this had very much the same circumstances at play, cold temperatures, lots of people without power. To my knowledge, we did not have any carbon monoxide incidents in the City of Renton, and I do believe part of that, we can thank Pree Dee for getting the word out to our community liaisons. We managed to get the word out there, and we also had, in addition to special communications with our diverse communities, we also had nine press releases that went out and countless Facebook posts and Twitters. Our emergency response call volume, fire documented 351 storm-related calls during a very short period of time, and police found they had at least 131 that were what they call traffic-related calls, blocking vehicles, accidents, road hazards, such as power lines down on the road, just in the period between January 17th to 22nd, that they responded to. Public Works was nearly constant in response, pretty much from January 13th ongoing, that's some of that background stuff Greg will cover, and in the EOC, we fielded approximately 500 response-related emails. We had excellent interdepartmental coordination. We had an incident command post established at the public workshops, and excellent information sharing between other locations, such as the Police Watch Desk, which served as our Departmental Operations Center for Police, Community Services Staff, and the Emergency Operations Center. We also had departments that volunteered staff who could not do their normal jobs. I know that Parks reallocated staff to assist with Public Works. So, excellent coming together from the city. And I wanted to mention as well that just like the city pulled together and crossed over some department lines to work together, we also found our community members contributed in a way which we can't really quantify, but we did find lots of people responding to, "Hey, I don't know about my neighbor. I'm helping out my neighbor." We're inviting people, and we know that this happened, and we know the Renton community really pulled together and helped each other out, and that really helped diminish the amount of response we had to do to go take care of everybody. So, very much a big thank you to the members of the Renton community. When we added up all of our numbers, we've got very rough numbers at this point, because we're still establishing what all of our costs were, but we're in the neighborhood of approximately $150,000 is what we estimate our storm response cost in overtime for staff per contract and in materials used. Much of that's budgeted for, because we do anticipate some response, but some of it may be in excess. So, we are going through a formal damage assessment process for FEMA. That announcement just went out to department administrators today to begin compiling those costs. We will be seeking federal reimbursement. If we are successful in achieving a presidential disaster declaration for King County, we'll contribute to the numbers overall for King County, then we have the potential to receive up to 70, at least 75% from FEMA to reimburse for storm-related costs. We also will be pursuing a private, private individual assistance. We don't have numbers yet to where to report that to, and we don't have estimates of the amount of damage, so those processes will be going on over the next couple of weeks. We'll be asking people to watch rentonwa.gov to know where to report their private property damages, and these are uninsured damages. The first call is to your insurance company. If it's covered by insurance, there's no recourse beyond that from FEMA's perspective. We also just had a couple safety messages, and we did have some fires related to the storm response, so we did have six fires we directly attribute to storm. They came to a total of $210,000 in private property damage. There were no injuries or fatalities, but we can say that from that, lessons learned, we pass on to other people to learn from others' experiences, is make sure you dispose of ashes properly from fireplaces, don't put them in paper bags or cardboard boxes, safe ash disposal, and then also keeping generators at least 10 feet away from buildings. I know we had at least one generator fire, and also keep them away from combustibles, and of course, for preventing carbon monoxide poisoning, keep generators away from, don't do them indoors, don't do them near windows or doors, don't use barbecues or camping equipment indoors as well. So, where we're at right now, we do still have a few people in Renton without power, so for those of you who are enjoying your power back on and you're nice and warm and toasty, our sympathies to those 1,510 that are still listing a Renton address that are out of power in the Puget Sound Energy Service Area. We do still have lots of trees that are down. We also have lots of debris issues pending, and I know that Greg's going to be addressing some of those, but I did want to mention that for tree-related issues, for public right-of-way trees, they can call the city's Urban Forestry Program, and we will have information on rentonwa.gov regarding all of these things as well. So, with that, I'm going to pass it on to Greg Zimmerman. He'll give a little bit more detail on Public Works' response.
Thanks, Deb.
Mr. Mayor, while Greg's walking up.
Excuse me, while Greg's walking up, I was just, got a phone call from Mr. Dave Nomura... Excuse me, while Greg's walking up, I was just, got a phone call from Mr. Dave Nomura, who is manager of local government community relations, wanted first to acknowledge and thank Deb and her crew. Our EOC was very helpful to Puget Sound Energy in just trying to help identify where we still have people out. As Deb said, we have about 1,500 people in the Renton area that are still without power. He said they have four crews working, there are two what they call circuits that they're working on, and he anticipates hopefully tomorrow afternoon at the latest when they would be able to have everybody up. So for those folks without, still without power, one more night and hopefully folks will be back on tomorrow. They have roughly 60, 66 crews in the South King working on a number of outages still south of us, and, and some of those probably won't be up until Wednesday, but we're, he seemed pretty hopeful. They're really down to now the, the, you know, smaller areas. Just as a reminder for our residents watching, the power company prioritizes their resources by transmission lines for sort of the same way that we do snow recovery. We work on the arterials first, so the power company will get their, their transmission lines up first, then they work on those outages that will bring the most number of people up the fastest. And there is, there was, we had a question from a resident about whether or not the type of neighborhood or income level or something like that. Obviously, that is, is not a factor at all. It is simply a matter of how, which, what can they do that would bring the most number of people up the fastest, and so they prioritize their calls that way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Before Mr. Zimmerman goes, I just wanted to acknowledge, picking up on Deborah's comment about the Facebook and the impact that social media had for emergency communication. As the council knows, I was actually in Germany through most of the storm, but it's like I knew every road that was closed, I knew everybody that was having a power outage. Mr. Prince had a power outage at his house, and I was aware of that. In addition, all the good things about the storm, like I knew which hills the kids were sledding on and exactly, you know, how much fun they were having. But it really is amazing how mainstream Facebook has gone, and I think many families go there as like a first place to get communication about the storms. And then now with smartphones, even when people's power is out, they can still take pictures and communicate back via the internet. So I'm glad we're adopting that. I think it's, it's a very effective way, you know, that makes some of the older systems we have, like even telephone trees and stuff seem a little bit archaic because it just, it seems like so many families are just immediately on Facebook looking at, you know, what's going on, and I knew all about the shelter through that. And it's like, I came back to Renton after the storm had mostly passed, there was still snow here and there, and it was exactly like I knew it would be because I'd seen a million pictures from everybody posted. But I, great that you're adopting that technology.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Jay. Thanks, Deborah.
One second, Greg.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask, Jay, do you happen to know where the areas in Renton that are still without power? Are they east Renton?
Yes.
I was just curious if David said.
We call them the two circuits, Panther Lake Circuit and Rolling Hills Circuit, and so one of the neighbors, of course, is our councilman, Prince's neighborhood, and the other is the Jesse Glenn neighborhood that's still, I think, potentially offline. He didn't give me the other areas, but it is all in that Benson Cascade area. Ed's neighborhood in that area.
There's one right above, there's a neighborhood right above the Seek Temple that's out.
Thank you.
Okay, Greg?
Okay. I'm Greg Zimmerman. I am Renton's Public Works Administrator, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just want to recap very quickly, but my main purpose for talking to you is to talk about some of the questions we're getting now and where we're going from here so people have a little bit of idea on questions that we've been hearing about, mainly about limbs and fallen trees and so forth on their property and what to do about that, and we've got some advice in that regard. Regarding the snow and ice removal, before the snow fell on January 15, we had two de-icer trucks spraying our anti-icer on arterial and collector streets. We like to do that in advance because if you get it out there soon enough, you can prevent the ice from, or water, or freezing water from bonding with the streets, and it's much easier to remove and creates less of a slippery situation. The snow removal crews went into emergency 12-hour shifts. We find that very efficient so that we're doing snow removal around the clock. We have seven sander plows that we're in use around the clock during the week. We followed our snow routes, and I know a lot of people are aware of it. If they're interested, they can see our snow routes, it's on the link on our City of Renton website, so you can see what the priority is and the streets we get to first and how that might impact your neighborhood and the route you, you may use to go to and from work and to get around. Generally speaking, we have emphasis on the major arterials first and then the major collector streets before we start getting into the residential streets. Obviously, it doesn't do any good to clean up the residential streets if people can't use our larger streets. We have to, we have to take care of that first, and then we get into the residential streets. With this particular storm, about halfway through the week, Thursday and Friday, we start, we were caught up enough with the major arterials and major streets to start getting, sending the plows into the residential streets as well. We had several streets that had to be temporarily closed. As Deborah said, most of that was due to trees falling and power outages and power lines down in roadways, which is always a dangerous situation. So we temporarily closed streets, and in most cases, we put detours up to the extent we could. South 192nd, which some people know as Snake Hill because it's winding and it's steep down in the south part of the city, connecting into Talbot, was closed due to its steep and winding nature and how slippery it was. It was very dangerous to travel on that road. We were able to get to it and plow it and open the street back up on Friday, the 20th. And by Saturday, the 21st, the crews had made an attempt to plow, sand, and salt all the city's streets, including main arterial, secondaries, and neighborhood streets. The 12-hour shifts that we were on ended last Saturday, so we were able to fall back onto less and less attention. We had quite a challenge with traffic signals, mainly because of all of the power outages that we were mentioning. Obviously, if you've got no power to the signals, the signals are dark. Some of our signals have battery backups in it. I think you, you're all aware of that, that we have a program where several signals a year, we put in batteries, UPS systems to back up the power. Those batteries usually only last about five or six hours, however, so we have to get in there and move around and change the batteries. We were taking the spare batteries from some of the signals that were, that had power and didn't need the batteries and putting them in the signals that were out so that we could keep them running. That's how we had enough charged batteries on hand. But the other signals that were dark, it's real important for people to know, and people were pretty good about this, remembering the rules of the road back from when we all took the test and read the manuals about it. A dark traffic signal is like a four-way stop. It needs to be treated like a four-way stop, so when you approach it, you stop and you look around and then proceed carefully through the, through the, the black, the dark signal. Our biggest backups were caused more by the traffic signal outages than they were actually by the snow conditions and the ice. We had some key signal outages on Benson and Carr Road, Petrovisky, old and new Benson. And because, because the signals were out, obviously, that slowed the traffic going through, and once you slow down, it starts a backup effect and you lose traction, and pretty soon there was a backup. So we had some backups in those areas, which we expect. We expect backups in those areas, Benson Road and Talbot, just because of their topography and so forth, but the power outages on some key signals really, really hurt us in that regard. As of today, all of Renton's traffic signals are in operation, so that's one good thing to report. We've got 120 so signals. The questions we're getting now are related to garbage service and solid waste service and also downed tree limbs and woody debris in people's yard, because the ice storm really did have an impact. A lot of trees fell, a lot of limbs fell. Some of you unfortunately are probably aware of that in your own yards, that there was damage. Waste Management missed collections three days last week, and it was hard for us to keep up on their backup plan because they kept on, they do what we call adaptive management. In other words, they have an idea how they're going to do the collections, and then they find out something else or the storm begins again and they change it, they adapt their program. So we found out the best approach we could have in informing the public on what to do is just ask the public to use the link that we have on our Renton website that links in to Waste Management's Renton site. And they were, whenever they adapted their approach for when they were going to do collections, it was right on the website there and people could read it. They changed several times, so if we wanted to announce something, it would have changed by the time we announced it. Currently, what the situation is, and this is posted on the website, is Waste Management plans to pick up garbage and recyclables, of course, that's the service we get every two weeks, that were not collected on Monday, Wednesday, or Thursday. They want to collect all of that on Friday this week, Friday, January 27th. So the two-week service, the garbage and the recycles that were missed this last week will all be collected on the 27th Friday. In terms of the yard waste and the, that service is our weekly service, that's going to be picked up on, on the next regularly scheduled week. So the one good thing about, that a lot of folks maybe aren't aware of, is we have no limit on how much yard waste you put down to be collected. We have some limits that are how it's presented. In other words, if you're going to, if you've got limbs or so forth or tree branches in your yard, they need to be cut up if you want Waste Management to pick them up on your weekly collection route. They need to be cut up in lengths no longer than four feet. The largest stem diameter that they will pick up is, it's got to be under four inches. So, and, and if you're doing it in stacks, if it's too much to fit into your receptacle, they ask that the stacks be no longer, no larger than three and a half feet across. They have to pick them up and, and put them in disposal. So what, what people could do is that they could cut up their woody debris into those lengths and put as many out as they want in a given week, and then put some more of it out on the next week, and put some more of it out on the next week, bit by bit, piece by piece, it'll all be collected. However, if the woody debris is larger than that and it's not convenient to cut it up into those four-foot lengths, there are some alternatives. We're asking the public not to bring woody debris in their yards out into the street and just leave it there for the Public Works crews to pick up. They're extremely busy with what's already in the streets, and that, that creates some big inefficiencies and also problems for traffic and people that are using the streets.
Mr. Mayor? Did it hear? Yes, Greg, I'd like, just a clarification, because I know there are people at home and they're really wanting to hear this information. When they cut their woody debris up in four-foot strips and, what, a couple of feet high?
About three and a half feet high.
Three and a half feet high, does it have to be tied?
It's, 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 that way, it would have to be tied, and we're asking that twine, a non-plastic tie be used because it's recyclable. So if you can use twine or rope or some sort of recyclable, non-plastic tie, that's preferred. But it, yeah, if, unless you can fit it into the cart or into boxes, people can use cardboard boxes, too. So any, any type of containment, but if you don't have a box and if it's not fitting in the cart, just tie it up into a bundle up to three and a half feet thick, up to four feet long, and leave as many bundles out there as you want every week, and then slowly but surely, you can have your yard cleaned up that way, by, by doing it that way. If it's a bigger problem than that, if the trees are bigger, if it's not convenient to cut it up, if you don't have chainsaws or you don't want to, want to use that type of thing, there's options to, there are places that you can take, there's recyclable, actually compost companies that are also linked on our website. If you go to our city website, you can see three places, three businesses in the region that will collect woody debris if you want to bring it there, but the homeowners have to, have to pick it up and ship it out there themselves. It's not part of the Waste Management Service if cutting it up into pieces doesn't work for people. Another alternative is on May 5th, we're going to have our, our city recycle, Spring Recycle Day, and we'll pick up larger pieces of wood during that. Now, May 5th is a long way to wait for some people. You might not want to wait until May 5th, but that's a way to get it picked up for free if people have places that they want to store and bring it to the recycle event. So those are some alternatives. They're all explained on our website for folks, how to get rid of the wood that's in their yard, and I think that, so there's several options that they can do. So that pretty much completes what, what I was going to talk about, particularly with the woody debris. We have, our crews right now are, we've got three sanders that are going around removing all the sand that we put on the streets because that becomes an inconvenience after you no longer need it. And we also have crew, one big crew running around picking up woody debris that's naturally, that fell into the streets, trying to remove it from the streets so that we have safe access.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Greg, do you have a, I noticed there, we got some potholes from the snow removal. Is that scheduled to have potholes taken care of?
Oh, yes. As a matter of fact, anybody that has a pothole, the best thing to do would be to call 425 Let us know, and we'll get out there and do an emergency repair right away so people's car, your tires don't get damaged. And then we'll do more permanent repairs when the weather allows that. So that would be the best way, that would be our maintenance shops they could call. Once again, it would be 425 430-7400.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
There's one other question. As I was taking my daughter to school this morning, I saw woody debris trees down all over the place, around our golf course, on the side of the road, and so I'm sure that they not even have a, my tree was topped right in my front yard. So for those people that have trees that are in precarious situations, positions as relates to power lines, phone lines, what should they do?
If, if the tree is on their own property, you, the city won't provide the service because it's a, it's a privately-owned tree. The best thing to do is to probably call a contractor to come out and look at it, and if it's threatening a power line, to call Puget Sound Energy to take a look at it. If it's a city street, a street tree in the right-of-way, Terry Flatley from, or our Maintenance Shops, again, at the 7400 number, will come, can come out and take a look and see if it's, if it's threatening things and what might be needed to be done. So those are the, those are the two options. If it's, if it's a dangerous situation, they should take care of it right away, obviously, rather than, than take a chance with it.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Deb, thank you for the report. Okay, we don't have anybody sign up for audience comment. Move on to the consent agenda. We have eight items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like to pull for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker?
Yes, I'd like to poll item D, please. And with that, I move that the council concur with the consent agenda minus item D.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the consent agenda minus item D. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Swicker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item D is referral was originally going to Finance Committee regarding consideration of the school district impact fees, given that this is just a part of the overall discussion on impact fees that are coming before the council. Kind of the goal is to get it into committee of the whole, so this would just be one step to start getting it in front of us at committee of the whole. And with that, I would change that referral. The Committee on Economic Development Department requests consideration of school district impact fee changes and adoption of the related ordinance referred to committee of the whole.
Second?
And moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Mr. Person, that item D referring to school district impact fees, we refer to committee of the whole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I'd like to ask Mr. Swicker, then we'll have a full discussion on, on the impact fees at, at committee of the whole.
Yes, all of the many areas of it will all be coming together in committee, or committee of the whole. I think Planning and Development's still going to have a briefing on Thursday on it, but it's still, it's all coming together in committee of the whole.
Yeah, well, we don't have a briefing scheduled, I don't think.
For Planning and Development.
Oh, Planning, oh, it's going to Planning and Development.
Part of it. They're going to get a briefing, but it's still all ultimately heading toward us.
Okay, my question is, the reason I question it is this has for years been in the, the Finance Committee, and I think it's great the whole council's taking a look at it, but I do have some concerns over, over these fees.
Exactly.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Swicker?
Um, unfinished business, there's no real committee report or anything, but we didn't, we did appoint Ed Prince to Raya 8 and Cedar River Council as the city's representative, and that's it for unfinished business for me.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Finance Committee has four finance committee reports.
Finance Committee report, reclassifications and reorganizations effective January 1, 2012. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve reclassification and salary adjustments for four current employees effective January 1, 2012 as follows: Planning Technician 2 to GIS Analyst 1, Grade A15 to A21, Salary Difference $3,072. Accounting Supervisor to Senior Finance Analyst, Grade A19 to M25, Difference $4,524. Senior Benefits Analyst to Benefits Program Manager, Grade M22 to M27, Difference $5,580. Traffic Sign and Paint Supervisor to Traffic Signage and Marking Supervisor, Grade A17 to A21, Salary Difference $3,396. The total cost of the reclassification is $16,572, excluding salary-related benefits, which will be absorbed by the departments in their 2012 budget. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
These reclassifications and reorganizations are a result of four positions in which, a couple of them, well, they all have been doing the work, the Planning Technician 2, the Accounting Supervisor, they've been taking on a greater workload over the past year. The Accounting Supervisor position has been doing it, doing the job essentially. The Senior Benefits Analyst was made into a manager's position as part of the Human Resources Work Plan, and the Traffic Sign and Paint Supervisor position went from primarily manual-type work to more high-tech work using our CAD GIS system, and so all of these reorganizations, reclassifications are justified. The total cost of all of these reclassifications are going to be absorbed by the department, so there is no requirement for any increase in budget. And with that, I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report: Bid Award for Rainier Avenue Roadway and Utilities Improvement Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to award the Rainier Avenue South SR 167 to, South Grady Way to Second Street project construction contract in the amount of $15,867,858.84 to Tri-State Construction Incorporated, the lowest responsible, responsive bidder. The committee also recommends that $700,000 be re-appropriated from the Water Utilities Transmission Main Replacement Project line item to the Rainier Avenue Roadway and Utilities Improvements Project line item in the approved 2012 capital improvement project budget. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the construction contract. This is signed by the committee vice chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
This bid, initially, our engineer estimates were about $17,650,000, much higher estimate than the bid came in at. So first and foremost, we've got a very competitive bid, and I had an opportunity to review all of the other bids, and we feel this is a strong bid, is typically, you know, if they're pretty much, there is 11 bids, if they're pretty close to each other, that really indicates that there's a good grasp of what the job entails. This work is broken up into three different parts. There's a street widening portion of it that includes curbs, gutters, sidewalks, traffic lights, et cetera. There's a water system piece to it, and then there's a utility vault for utility conduits, Puget Sound Energy, cable, Comcast, and the like. The water utility, however, the water system improvements, we estimated those two initially to be about, and budgeted the cost for those to be less than, we're actually realizing that they are going to be due to design changes. But the good news is that we do have the funds to reappropriate from the Water Utilities Transmission Main Replacement Project funds that we did not use last year, so we're going to be able to cover this at good speed. The project is projected to break ground sometimes towards the end of February, and it's going to be a good project once it's complete, and I know we've all waited quite a bit for this project to take place. With that, I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report: Parking Space Lease Amendment with King County Metro. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to approve Amendment 5 to the lease agreement with King County Metro for 200 parking spaces at the city center parking garage to extend the lease term from December 31, 2011 to December 31, 2012, with generated revenue of $3,000 per month. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the lease amendment. This is signed by the committee vice chair, member, and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
This amendment is a fifth amendment to the previous, or the existing lease agreement we have with King County Metro for leasing 200 parking spaces at the downtown parking garage, and there's no changes in it. It's an extension for another year. They do have an option that if they should want more spaces, there's an option for 50 more spaces should they decide to expand, and it's good for us, and that we do get revenue from those spaces. We do have a number of vacant spaces there, too, so this is good for us to extend this agreement. With that, I recommend that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report: Regional Aerial Mapping Funding Agreement. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a regional aerial mapping funding agreement with King County in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for the purchase of aerial imagery. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the agreement. This is signed by the committee vice chair, member, and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
This aerial mapping work typically is done by us every three, three or so years. We most recently did it in 2009, and at that time, we did it individually as a city, and we bore the cost of about $90,000 for the work. There is a new consortium of about 48 entities, a variety of different cities, that have collaborated together to share cost in this type of work, and as a result of it, we're saving a tremendous amount of money in having this work done. It doesn't reduce the scope of the work that we normally would have done if we operated and did this independently, but it does reduce our costs drastically from a $90,000 cost to a third of that. So it's good for us, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to continue this relationship in the future with this consortium. And King County is acting as the facilitator for it, and it's good for the city. I like to see these kinds of ideas that save us money, and I'm sure the residents do as well. And with that, I recommend council concur with the committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
Yes, the Public Safety Committee has three reports.
Public Safety Committee Report: Vehicle Impoundment Appeals. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the ordinance adding a new subsection 10-5-7E to Rent and Municipal Code, allowing a written statement by the owner of a towed motor vehicle in lieu of an appearance at a post-impoundment hearing. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
Move that council concur with the recommendation of the, oops, of the Public Safety Committee.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Public Safety Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Public Safety Committee Report: Ordinance Amending Police Regulations, Rent Municipal Code Chapter 6, 18. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the ordinance addressing a number of weaknesses in Rent Municipal Code Title 6, Chapter 18. Specifically, the ordinance amends 618-5 entitled Dangerous Weapons Evidence by making it more specific and making the penalty a gross misdemeanor. It amends Rent Municipal Code 618-11 entitled Breach of the Public Peace by adding an offense for causing a riot, clarifying some language, eliminating potentially unconstitutional language, making some of the penalties gross misdemeanors, and adding some definitions. It amends RMC 618-19 entitled Making or Having Auto Theft Tools by clarifying some language. It amends RMC 618-20 entitled Park Rules and Regulation Violations to make it a gross misdemeanor to vandalize, vandalize city property or engage in acts of violence. It also adds criminal accomplice, criminal attempt, criminal coercion, criminal conspiracy, criminal defense of insanity, and criminal solicitation as theories of liability or as a criminal defense under the code. It adds a criminal jail alternative of adjournment in contemplation of dismissal. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair, vice chair, and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
Move that council concur with the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Public Safety Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Public Safety Committee Report: Amend Junk Vehicles and Garbage References in Rent Municipal Code. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to amend Title 6, Chapter 1, Police Regulation Junk Vehicles, and Title 8, Chapter 1, Health and Sanitation Garbage of City Code to correct and update references to Title 1, Chapter 3, Remedies and Penalties. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair, vice chair, and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Public Safety Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Prince?
Yes, Planning Development Committee has one report.
Planning and Development Committee Report: Fee Waiver Request, Glenwood Town Homes. The Finance Committee recommends the approval of a 100% waiver of the development and mitigation fees as provided for in Rent Municipal Code 41210C for the Renton Housing Authority's Glenwood Town Homes, an eight-unit affordable housing development in the Sunset area, and direct staff to establish and record a restrictive covenant regarding the affordable housing unit set aside prior to the issuance of the Certificate of Occupancy for the project. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move that the council concurs with the committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have two resolutions and three ordinances for first reading from the Public Safety Committee.
The first resolution regards the transfer of drainage facilities interlocal agreement with King County. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with King County regarding the transfer of drainage facilities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker?
I move that the council concur in the resolution.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Ms. Palmer, that council approve the resolution as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Second resolution regards the regional aerial mapping funding interlocal agreement. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement entitled 2012 Regional Aerial Mapping Funding Agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
I move that council concur with the, I've moved that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Swicker, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The first ordinance for first reading is the code amendment regarding written statement for tow and impound hearings. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 10-5-7 of Chapter 5, Impoundment and Redemption of Vehicles of Title 10, Traffic of City Code, by adding a new subsection 10-5-7E, allowing a written statement by the owner of the motor vehicle in lieu of an appearance at a post-impoundment hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Swicker, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Next ordinance for first reading is another code amendment revising Title 6, Chapter 18. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 18, Penal Code of Title 6, Police Regulations of City Code, clarifying and strengthening the penal code by revising Section 618-5, Dangerous Weapons Evidence 618-11, Breach of the Public Peace 618-19, Making or Having Auto Theft Tools, and 618-20, Park Rules and Regulation Violations, and Permitting Offenses to be Charged and Plead Guilty to, under the, under the Rent Municipal Code, by adding seven new sections, Adjournment in Contemplation of Dismissal, Criminal Accomplice, Criminal Attempt, Criminal Coercion, Criminal Conspiracy, Criminal Defense of Insanity, and Criminal Solicitation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
I move the ordinance to be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Swicker, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the last ordinance for first reading is a code amendment regarding references to Chapter, Title 1, Chapter 3. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 611 and 613 of Title 6, Police Regulations, and Section 816 of Chapter 1, Garbage of Title 8, Health and Sanitation of City Code, correcting the references to the revised Chapter, Title 1, Chapter 3 of Code.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
Move that the ordinance be advanced, oops, not want to be advanced, we want, move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Swicker, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Bonnie. Moving on to new business, Mr. Swicker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have several items. First, I want to start with a couple of potential referrals. I apologize, I don't think I got a copy of the letter in everybody's red folder, but on January 3rd, I received a letter from Jim Hansen discussing the requirements of the city that when there's alley access, the new infill housing needs to access the alley. This is something that's been gone over a few times by the Planning Commission, as well as council, but I think that in talking with Chip Vincent, it seems like something that he was, wanted to see if the Planning Commission had some interest in. So with that, I would like to refer to the administration, the letter from Hanson Consulting regarding alleys, to run it through Chip and see if he wants to take it to the Planning Commission, see what their interest is. So let me try that motion one more time. Refer to the administration, the January 3rd letter from John Hansen, Jim Hansen.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Mr. Corman, that a letter from Jim Hansen in regards to alley access be referred to the administration. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Second one is a referral that I'd like to make the committee of the whole. It's regarding the appeals from the hearing examiner. Currently, they go to the Planning and Development Committee, and we've got an upcoming one. We haven't done, really done one for a year or so. When we were looking at this one, because one that's coming down the pipe potentially could be a little controversial, we were looking at the statute to see if it was a requirement that council had to take that appeal, or if it was an option, and Larry's review, city attorney Larry Warren's review, was that it's a requirement. So we'd kind of like to take a look at that and see if it's, it's something that we'd be interested in making it an option for the council to hear an appeal and be able to have the ability to pass on one to superior court if they wanted to. Larry's going to give us a briefing at the next council meeting, kind of, again, what, how an appeal works, anyway. So what I wanted to do is refer into committee of the whole this issue, just to have it open simultaneously. So with that, I would like to refer to committee of the whole regarding the requirement of an appeal from the hearing examiner to be heard by council.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Ms. Palmer, that the process in regards to hearing examiner appeals be referred to committee of the whole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And now moving just to meeting call out. Um, the council meeting set for, or Monday, June 30th, there is no council meeting because that is a fifth Monday. So next Monday, there is no council meeting. Um, I'm gonna call out for, uh, council member Breyer. Uh, on February 6th at 4:00 PM is the Finance Committee, which will meet in the council conference room, uh, beginning at 4:00 PM, with two items, vouchers and the King County Conservation District Grant for Not Weed Control. But then I want to call out the committee of the whole, um, which will take place on February 6th, beginning at 5:00 PM. We have a few items in a couple of different locations. Um, beginning at 5:00 o'clock, we have two items that will be taking place in the council conference room, um, with the reminder that those are not televised. Uh, those two items, um, is the Fin, Finance and Information Systems Department Reorganization. That item, uh, is contemplated to have action taken. Um, and then we will also, a second item will be finalization, um, of the council policies that we discussed earlier this evening. So we have two weeks for anybody to comment on that, and again, that would be proposed with council action to be taken. Uh, and then approximately 5:30, we will come back into council chambers for two items. Uh, the first one being a briefing only, um, on SCORE, which we heard about earlier, is the, the South County Jail. And the second topic, um, is a briefing on the human services funding process. Um, interesting on that, I asked to have a presentation on this, is, uh, I know last year, when we did with budget and the human services funding, we had some issues about the grant process and some longtime, uh, community, uh, based organizations didn't receive funding and that type of stuff. They took that and didn't just, you know, correct that problem, they ran with it, and there's some incredible stuff I think you guys will be excited to hear about. So we'll have a briefing on that. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Well, I was gonna call out Finance, um, as the vice chair, but thank you, Mr. Zwicker, for doing that for me. But, uh, I would like to just mention that, uh, I did attend a couple of events over the past, uh, couple of weeks. Uh, on Friday, uh, the, um, Seattle Racing Social Justice Initiative, uh, held a conference at McCall Hall, and, uh, I attended along with, um, Deputy Fire Chief Eric Walgren. It was an all-day event, and, uh, it was called Governing for Racial Equity Conference. A lot of great information. I was able to bring some packets back for a couple of our city employees who were unable to go. Preeti was not able to go, also Karen Burgsvik, so I did bring some information back for them, and, uh, would be delighted to share some with council at a future date. Uh, also, several weeks ago, I, uh, was able to attend an event, uh, put on by REWA, Refugee Women's Alliance. Uh, they have a, a Russian-speaking outreach specialist by the name of Vitali Musyenko, who, uh, put on an event at the Ukrainian Community Center of Washington. Uh, Senior Deputy Prosecutor David Martin was a speaker there, and, uh, it was a most impressive event, because he even mentioned that, uh, throughout the county, he had never seen a, uh, there's over 60 men who attended, and all of these men were riveted, interested in what they could do to, uh, reduce domestic violence in their community. And, um, what initially was going to be about a 20-minute presentation ended up going about 40 minutes because of the questions that they had. So it was very, you know, inspiring to see that level of interest, and, and it was on a Saturday, and there was a playoff game on TV as well. So it was very interesting, and I was happy to be a part of that. Uh, and, um, that is all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Corman?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Ms. Palmer?
Oh. Oh, I missed it. I did. Thank you, um, my esteemed colleague, Ms. Palmer's looking out for me again. I do have a Transportation Committee meeting to announce, uh, for January 26th at 4:00 PM in the, uh, council conference room, and, uh, three items on that transportation meeting agenda. First item is Garden Avenue Project Update, uh, second item is Towaway Signs, and the third item is URS Agreement for Airport On-Call Services. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Corman. Ms. Palmer?
Have to make you work, Mr. Corman. I don't have any committee meetings, but I would like to refer into, um, the Public Safety Committee, uh, the Fire Department's Emergency Response System in Vehicles. Just a briefing. I'm just curious on how that...
Second.
How that works.
Fire Department Response?
System.
System.
The computer system that they use in the vehicles?
Okay. So it's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Person, that, uh, the issue of fire emergency response systems be referred to the Public Safety Committee? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Person.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee scheduled for February 6th is canceled, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, Planning Development Committee meeting on, uh, Thursday, January 26th, um, in the council conference room from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. Um, we'll be discussing the impact fees. We'll be doing a briefing on impact fees.
Okay, that's, we'll be happy that you get a briefing before all of the assumptions are made out in the public.
I can't wait.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Okay, uh, anybody would like to address the council?
Move we adjourn. Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.